And if we're all set, we'll start this one on time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 7th, 2019 at 7:00 P. M. Meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We'll call the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each. Commissioner Jason James. Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Here.
Commissioner Michael McDermid. Commissioner Milton Goodwin.
Where did he go? Well.
We have for him.
Yes, he seems to have stepped away, but I don't doubt he'll return at some point. All right. I trust you've all read the minutes of March 5th, 2019. The chair will call for a motion to approve.
So move.
Seconded. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Bob Pashon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. Thank you for the copy, and I have a blue ink pen, so that will be good. Thank you. Ah, here he is. Yes. Very good. Thank you. All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda, by the way?
No, sir, not from staff.
No amendments. Very good. Any communications? No? All right. We have no continued public hearings, so we go eight and five. PC 5-19.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we call the item, because some of these items are quasi-judicial, we have a standard statement that I would read into the record.
Please do.
And then the board members would do disclosures for any communications that there have been from interested parties.
Fine. Very good. Go ahead.
And I need to explain that. I'll go ahead and do that. So, please be advised that some of the following items on the agenda are quasi-judicial in nature. The applicant or duly authorized agent for the applicant must be present; in some cases, it's the city. If no representative is present, the application will be tabled to the next Board of Adjust -- or next planning commission meeting. When the petition is announced, the applicant or his or her agent shall approach the microphone and state his or her name and address for the record. Any interested party wishing to speak on any item may approach the podium after the board has opened the public hearing. Each party shall approach the microphone and state his or her name and address for the record, and shall address his or her comments to the board. Each party shall speak for not more than two minutes in order to provide for order and time for other interested parties to address their concerns and comments to the board. So, in quasi-judicial matters, ex parte communications are permitted, but if they occur, they are required to be disclosed. So, review of the agenda reveals that only PC 8-19 is a legislative item. The other items are, at least in my opinion, quasi-judicial. So if you had contact with anyone, and hopefully other than board members, you should disclose what -- who the contact was with and just the subject matter of the contact.
The only contact I had was a briefing by the city planner.
That's fine.
I've received an email that someone was trying to reach me, and that person never did. I do know the person who was trying to reach me, but I have not contacted her or responded to her email.
Gary, this is for 9-19.
All of the items will collectively, so if you have had any contact, we'll just make all of those disclosures.
Anything on the agenda?
Yes. Except for -- except for 8-19, which is the height definitions, which we consider a legislative item because it's citywide.
On the 5-19 Johnson-Wells master plan, I've met with the president of the university, Dr. Rice, Ismarie, and the staff. I think we've been on two or three occasions. I'm their neighbor. We talked about it.
That's fine.
Okay. I met with the city planner.
It's fine. My only conversations were with staff.
Yeah. What about the email I think that we all received about PC 9-19?
Yeah, it was probably put in the record, so that's fine.
Okay.
Well, I did not get that one.
That's fine, too.
Should we read this into the record?
Yes, sir, that's the point for tonight, is I need for you to read that into the record.
Gary, you said 8-19 is legislative. It's not?
Yes.
Okay.
Citywide.
All right. So, we're going with PC 5-19. All right. And this email we're talking about pertains to which item?
That would be for the next item, 6-19.
6-19, okay.
No, yes, and 7-19.
All right, so we'll read that when we get to it. All right. "A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving an amendment to the previously approved Johnson-Wells University Master Campus Development Plan in accordance with the requirements set forth in City Administrative Regulation Number 09-18, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes. Staff report, please."
Good evening, Chair and commission members. For the record, Debbie Love, city planner. This item is for Johnson and Wells University Campus Master Plan, and I have a brief presentation. And the applicant is here tonight, and they also have a presentation. So, this request is actually a resolution approving the campus master plan. Florida statute requires that universities have to prepare and adopt a campus master plan every five years, and our city, we have a set of administrative regulations that govern the process for what has to go into the campus master plan, as well as the process by which it functions through the approval process. So, in this case, they've had campus master plans before that have been amended. This is now the third amendment to the campus master plan. And really, what's changed, and they'll talk in more detail, is they are proposing a new nine-story, 250-bed Palm Gardens residence hall. They have a new nine-story Biscayne Commons 2, which is a residence hall. They already have Biscayne Commons 1. This would be Biscayne's Commons 2. They are doing a new three-story student services and academic building, which is what you see up on the screen there in that photo -- in that picture. They have a greenhouse, which is to support their hospitality program, and a new soccer field, and they're going to do some upgrades to a practice field. The next steps for this is it's going to city council on June 25th, and then within nine months after they go back and get their campus master plan adopted by their Board of Regents, then they'll come back with a development agreement. That has to go through our process. That again goes back to you all and back to city council again, and those dates, we'll establish those after down the road as it occurs. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I do know that the applicant is here, and they have a brief presentation as well.
All right. Thank you. Please step forward, state your name for the record and your position with the university.
Thank you. My name is Larry Rice. I'm the campus president of Johnson-Wells University's North Miami campus.
Your PowerPoint is up there. Let me open it for you.
Thank you. As she's opening that up, I can -- I'll begin the presentation by providing a brief background. Yes, if you could, that would be great. Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
No, it's quite all right. Thank you. As they're preparing it, I can begin in the interest of time to keep us on -- keep you on schedule. For those who are not familiar with Johnson and Wells, I do want to provide just a glimpse of our background, our history. For those of you who know, you know that Johnson-Wells has been around, and thank you so much. It's been around as a university system for -- since 1914. We were founded in 1914 in Providence, Rhode Island. So the university's had a rich history in Providence, Rhode Island, Charleston, South Carolina, Denver, Colorado, and in 1992, we opened up a campus in North Miami. So we're excited to be in North Miami. We have a 28-acre footprint. And throughout our evolution since 1992, we've been very excited to have hosted now three academic buildings, seven residence halls, and one student center. The campus has roughly a little under 1,400 students, and those are all full-time matriculating students, a little under 1,400, half of which are from Florida. And so we're very proud to host so many students from the Florida community. Fifty-seven percent of those students reside on campus, and they call North Miami, the city of North Miami, their home. And we're excited about that because not only are they here for four years, but many of our students will now continue to pursue our graduate degrees and stay an additional year. So many of them are here for five years, and we're excited about that as well. And I won't go through everything on here, but I must note that the campus has been recognized nationally on many fronts. I received an email today that one of our graduates from the North Miami campus, which is a testament to the city, his name is Vishwich Bats, is a James Beard Award winner that was just announced this week. And that is huge because it transcends the United States and goes abroad as well. And that's something that's a testament to the richness of what students experience at the North Miami campus. We have been ranked by the Wall Street Journal as number one in diversity for the South. That means of all the universities in the South region of the United States, the North Miami campus of Johnson and Wells is ranked number one. And that's a big deal. We take great pride in it because the Wall Street Journal first vetted it, and they used the I-PASS results, which every university has to comply with through federal regulations. And they have used true data to determine that the North Miami campus of Johnson and Wells is an environment that not only promotes diversity for its students but for its staff, and we create an environment that promotes diversity and inclusion. And that's something that we take great pride in because not only are we number one in the South, we are ranked number three in the nation. And that is not speaking of just Johnson and Wells, it's specific to the North Miami campus. And what we're excited about with that is all the promo that has gone out for that. And even when the Wall Street Journal published its findings, they were very specific and explicit in saying that it's not Florida, it's not Miami, it's the city of North Miami. And that's something that we take great pride in. We're also known as a tree campus because of our edible landscape, and we have received the presidential award from the United States President over a number of years for the 30,000 community service hours that we commit each year to our community. And that's something that not only involves our students, but involves our faculty and our staff as well as myself, and we take great pride in that. We're also excited and proud, and we know that our economic impact is strong, but we are also equally pleased that our community impact is just as strong. And so we do take great pride in knowing that in 1992, I started at Johnson-Wells in 1993. And as a young professor in 1993, when I came to the campus, it was not the environment that we see today. I, along with many of my colleagues, were a little bit taken aback by the lack of lighting and the lack of sidewalks and what appeared to be influx of 911 calls to North Miami PD, but we've seen over the years how that has transformed. And I think that the North Miami PD would also testify that the university has been quite critical in the reduction, the marked difference in reduction of the number of 911 calls to the city from our footprint. And so we believe that that has made a tremendous impact, not only on our students and staff and faculty, but on the community as well. We pride ourselves in seeking to create a campus that is coherent, that people, when they see it, when they're on campus, they recognize it as a university, not as a vocational school, but as a true college campus that is collegial, and that is what we've been focusing on. And what I wanted to impress upon the community when I met with the community to talk about our master plan, I wanted them to know that we have a 28-acre footprint. It is not our intention to expand beyond that. We have no plans to expand beyond that. This is our footprint. My priority and the campus's priority is to continue to enhance and really take care of the footprint that we have. That's our focus. We want to invest funds in the property that we have to make sure that it continues to look beautiful, that it continues to contribute to the city at large, and that when people walk on the Johnson-Wells campus, they take great pride, not only in our university's center, but that they also take pride in being a part of the city of North Miami. So these are just renditions. This was what I saw when I first came to North Miami -- when I first came to Johnson-Wells University in 2006. It really didn't look much different in 1992. That was northeast 17th Avenue. And today, this is what northeast 17th Avenue looks like. It looks more collegial. It looks like a college campus. We take great pride in it. If you can go back one slide, go back. This is what it feels like when students are now walking on campus. They feel like they're walking on a college campus that is safe, and that's something that we do take pride in, and we try to emphasize it with parents, because back in 1992, we would spend most of our times convincing parents that the campus was safe. Now, that conversation has diminished significantly, and we're excited about that, and we believe that it is a part of the conversations that we've had over the years, working in conjunction with North Miami PD to help us in terms of making sure our security structure, which is 24 hours a day security, that we're tight, that we're effective, and that we're responsive. And we do believe that that partnership has helped us to solidify that. Now, the landscape looks like this across the campus. We go around campus, students now, when they're parking, going out of class late at night, graduate students who are leaving campus at night, they see that the sidewalks are lit, they see that the parking lots are lit, they feel much safer than it before. In the past, they would have to get a shared ride, or we would have to have a shuttle take them to their cars. Now, we don't have to do that. They now feel like they're at home, and we take great pride in that. This was Biscayne Commons back in 2006, which wasn't bad, but this is Biscayne Commons now. And so again, our priority is to look at our footprint, look at the spaces that we currently have, and continue to invest and reinvest in those spaces to make sure that they're up to code, that they look good, that they are excellent. And right now, we have seven resident halls. I can't say that each of those seven resident halls are at the standard that we'd like them to be at, so we're going to continue to invest in them, and we're continuously reevaluating them and assessing them. This is the university center back in 2012. It was nice, but this is the university center today. It is something that we can all take great pride in now. We continue again to invest in it. And this was Village, the old Village Tower Apartments. Many of you may remember them. That was, as can be affirmed, by North Miami PD. Go back through those records. That was one of the hotspots for 911 calls, but yet, it was right there in our footprint. And across from it was an abandoned, dilapidated trailer park.
Right.
We've been able to clean all of that up over time, and we take great pride in it. We believe that it's a part of the university's success story, but we believe that it's a part of North Miami's success story equally. What I'm going to do now is introduce our consultant, who works with Sasaki, major architectural firm out of Boston, but they've done great work in Florida. They've worked with FSU. They've worked with the University of South Florida. They've done work at Biscayne. They know South Florida, so I'm going to ask Ms. Katia Lucic if she'd come forward and share a little bit about the specifics of the master plan, and it will be brief.
So, as Dr. Rice mentioned, a lot of these buildings that we -- that we're -- that they are here on the master plan, and you can see the drawing of the master plan, and you can rotate yourself, they were -- they are very old buildings. So everything that will happen in long-term future, I don't think so any of these buildings will happen in short-term future, will happen as these old buildings will need it to be replaced. As we know, some of -- we know that, as Dr. Rice mentioned, you already started replacing some of the buildings, but in the next five to 10 years, for example, Palm Gardens that you know that they are here in the area where now you can see.
Please stay in front of the microphone, or you will be heard on the.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Good. So you can see this area here. These are very old housing that was there since '92, and it's going to be -- it's already coming to the end of its age, and it's very difficult to make a future repairs, and investment would be prohibited to work on those, so I think it would be much better to build the new buildings. So this is what you see here in the pink. The other building is additional building across Biscayne, what we call Biscayne 2, and this is another 250 beds that eventually would come in 10 to 15 years. Johnson and Wells is not really growing. I think a lot of universities here are really, and colleges are really trying very hard to keep their students and giving them opportunity to live on the campus and not compete with the developers outside of the market is something that will create need for these housing projects, that is residential halls. And the third thing is also that you see here at the corner of northeast 130th Street, it's a new academic building. And it's really on that particular space because this is the kind of area that will become a new gateway from the campus. We have a gateway from the Biscayne, and this would be another gateway to the campus from the north. And also, again, as new colleges are, they just opened two new colleges, and as the new infrastructure would be needed to support these new programs, it's going to be very important to have different type of classrooms, and that may happen in the future. So this is really just to have a place in the case, in this master plan, in case they need to do something in the next 10 to 15 years. The only thing that may happen sooner is a small building that we can see on Emerald Drive, the small pink building. There is an empty lot with eight parking spaces, and just to have a nicer look, they are planning to do another greenhouse that's going to be in that place instead of the parking lot along that street. So this is the major development that will happen, and the slides here, as you can see, they are really, as the streets are positioned along the -- we can see these new buildings, they are really coming to the edge of the street, they are really bringing, forming a nice courtyard and landscape for the future, and Johnson and Wells will continue to build and develop their campus. I think that's it for today.
Thank you very much. Dr. Rice?
Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this is invited to step forward. Calling once, calling twice, and there appears to be no public inquiry, or so we will close the public hearing. Time for commission discussion or questions, and if not, then we'll call for a motion to move the item.
I have one question, if I can. I'm a little confused on this, Dr. Rice or Ismarie? We have, it says, "The addition of the student service and academic building as proposed, three-story, 45-foot-tall, 65,000-square-foot building." Okay. You were going to put that in where the current soccer field is, right? The Arch Creek Field?
We were originally going to put it there.
Okay. Then it goes on to say, "Or the combined sites of Arch Creek Parking Lot and Arch Creek Residence Hall."
Yes.
Is that the one off of 16th Avenue?
That is.
Okay. So you were thinking of moving the building over there?
Yeah, we are.
Okay. All right. The only thing, so you're not sure if you're going to put it in that field like we had discussed?
We're not. And so we would have, we would definitely open up for more discussion, and we'd have an architect take a look at it, and what we need more than anything is the money.
I can't help you there.
Okay.
Okay. The only thing I would ask is that would fit, the footprint would fit right in the field, so we wouldn't destroy any of the greenery that we have there, the trees and all that stuff on the canal. That would stay. We would have that buffer.
That is true.
And then you would have the building.
That is true.
Okay. The only other thing I would say, if you're going to put it there, if we do eventually put it there, which I don't know when, we use type of glass that would not be reflective at night.
Agreed.
Okay? And that's it. Otherwise, you guys have been great neighbors, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the wonderful job you've done for the city, and you did reduce crime substantially. I can remember Lakeside, Emerald Lake Apartments, when I was the chief of police, we were there six, seven hundred times a year, the other dump you ripped down over there.
Yeah.
Amazing. Amazing how you transformed that neighborhood. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, if I can. Do you have, you've done a wonderful job beautifying your campus and make the whole area look a lot nicer. Do you have any short-term plans to do something with the lot that's going to become your soccer field? I mean, it's kind of become a little bit of a dump site.
We do. We do. We have plans. We have very lofty goals, and we were hoping that some of those plans would have been discussed today, however, it just didn't solidify. So we are, we do have intentions, whatever, we have, I should say, opposing priorities, and whichever one, and all of them are equally important. So we would love for it to enrich student life by having a soccer field there if possible. We've entertained that. We've even had conversations.
Maybe a sidewalk?
Well, that would come with it. So regardless of what we were to do with it, a sidewalk would be a part of that.
So that's down the road, though?
It is. It is. And I would just note that all the sidewalks that you see currently in place, and there are quite a few, we actually invested those 100%. Those did not require any taxpayer monies. The university invested in it. It does cost an awful lot. So if we had more funds, we would do that, but we just don't at the time.
Ms. Ernst?
Dr. Rice, your gateways were noted as 130th Street coming off of Biscayne, also, I believe, northeast 127th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Those gateways will remain open to access to vehicle traffic, and also residents. I want to go back and forth to get to those buildings and to the publics. You don't anticipate any plans to shut that off, do you?
We have no plans for any additional street closures. The street closures that have taken place were all a part of assessment of the campus footprint, and it all spoke to safety. So we only focused on student safety at the time when the street closures took place. Now that student safety has been realized, there's no intentions or plans to do any or even request any additional street closures.
And the gateways basically are just signs? When you say gateways, they're the signs that you listed?
Yes, sir.
I noticed, I think you've already put one or two in?
And it's all directions, so we provide directions, whether it's online or through email.
Just campus identification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the university? Mike?
Yeah. By the way, you speak about the Wildcat Center.
Yes, sir.
And I remember the tour that we took at that old apartment building on 124th Street, where absolutely the worst of the worst were in there, and the North Miami Police Department said they spent half their night, you know, half the force was there at that building all the time. I mean, what you've done to the neighborhood and improving the neighborhood has just been phenomenal. I mean, it's just really just improved everything around it. It's had a real ripple effect.
Yes.
My only comment is on 124th Street, when the soccer field happens, you really need to get a walkway, some sort of dedicated walkway between the parking lot across the street and the soccer field, because there is still going to be traffic on 127.
You're right.
So there needs to be some sort of dedicated, obvious, this is a walkway kind of situation so some of the kids don't get run over the way some of the cars drive down that street. But other than that, I, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I'd like to move, you know, approval of this. I think it's a wonderful thing, and a wonderful thing for North Miami.
Let me just see if anyone else has comments, gentlemen? No? All right. And we have a motion to approve by.
Second.
McDermid, seconded by Kenny Each. All in favor?
Aye.
Your master plan is approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Rice. Wish you every success, and may you find some wealthy donors so that your plans can be realized within our respective lifetimes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. So now we're ready for PC 6-19. This is, Mr. Hald, should we go ahead and read this in, or do you want to presage with any comments or the email that we need to read? Or we take the item first, read it, and then anything else we have to?
The latter.
Okay. All right. This is PC 6-19. "An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting amendments to Volume 1. Goals, objectives, and policies of the city of North Miami 2016. Comprehensive plan." Comprehensive Plan, in accordance with the requirements of Section 163.3184/PRIN 3, Florida Statutes 2018, and Chapter 29, Article 3, Division 11, Section 3-1102/PRIN A, and Sections 3-1105 through 3-1110 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, specifically by amending the future land use element to, one, create a new North Miami Transit Station overlay district with related goals, objectives, and policies; and, two, at Policy 1.2.1, to establish maximum density and height for the new overlay district, and amending the future land use map to reflect the boundary of the new overlay district, providing for an adoption hearing and subsequent transmittal of the proposed amendments and supporting data and analysis to the state land planning agency for a determination of completeness, providing for repeal, conflict severability, and an effective date. Staff report.
Again, Debbie Love, city planner. And the item before you is related to, let me get this up on the screen, is related to the new North Miami Transit Station overlay. This actually is implementing the North Miami Mobility Hub and TOD Strategic Plan. And I'm sure many of you were either part of the workshops that occurred. And I know that you each have read this, so, and for those who haven't, there's an executive summary that we'd be more than happy to provide you a copy so that you can see that. It also implements other parts of our studies and in our comprehensive plan. What this is going to do is it establishes the residential density for the area. It not only sets it, the boundaries, as you can see, it's outlined there on the current future land use map, outlined in red. It sets the density at 125 dwelling units per acre. The height, as recommended in the study, is 200 feet inclusive of parking. And it allows a mixed use and a wide variety of uses that are currently allowed under the zoning categories. For example, an M1 residential is not allowed. So this overlay would allow a lot more uses that could occur within that. It was established through a radius, a quarter-mile radius. And it was very specific, the consultant was very specific in excluding any single-family districts. And staff went through and actually tried to ground truth a lot of the boundary to make sure that, again, that it was a correct boundary. So we're very comfortable with providing this to you, as this is the proposed boundary. It meets the requirements and the suggested boundaries as established in the plan. Not only is it this, but it's also in our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan says you are going to establish a TOD district around 125th and the FEC corridor. And interesting is that ULI did an Arch Creek Basin Study. And one of the recommendations is, and something is very interesting, is that right there on the FEC corridor, I don't have the little thing going on here, little light, but along that corridor there is what's called a coastal ridge. And it's actually the high, one of the highest points in the city. So they said that when you do this, you should do a pilot project, creating a TOD district focusing on that coastal ridge. And in the Arch Creek area, there used to be a slough. There was actually a slough. And Mr. James knows what a slough is. And for those of you who do not know what a slough is, a slough is a formation in the ground that's sort of a depression that moves water. And it actually helped to recharge our groundwater. It prevented flooding. It was a natural slough. And of course, over time, that slough has been filled with development. And in the ULI Arch Creek Study, and those of you who haven't read it, let me know, and I'd be happy to point you in the right direction. It actually talks about creating a new slough. So there's a lot of very interesting things in that study, even though it was for the Arch Creek area. It really focused a lot on North Miami, and particularly around this transit station. And that's where they suggested putting it, because of the high ridge. I thought that was very interesting. We always think of that as just the comprehensive plan and this study, but no, ULI actually recommended that that's the perfect location for your station because of the height of the ground. So what will happen after tonight is there's a companion item that goes along with this, the LDRs. After tonight, it goes to city council on 6/11, and then it will get transmitted, the comprehensive plan amendments will get transmitted to the state. Once they come back with whatever comments, if any, that they have, then we'll bring those back, both the comprehensive plan amendment and the LDR amendment to city council for second reading. That will be determined once we get that back from the state. And then they become effective, the comp plan becomes effective 31 days after the state says, "Your package is complete, and we're happy, you know, go to town." So this could be probably about the other...
The end of the year.
Close to that, yes.
Yeah, October, November, December, somewhere.
November-ish, right.
Somewhere in the last quarter.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so then it will come back to city council at that point. And that's the end of my presentation on the comp plan amendments.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, then, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Please give your name and address. First call, I See No Brave Souls. Second call, no one is yet inclined. We have a volunteer? Somebody is stepping up? All right.
Thank you. My name is Gail Cornbloom. I live at 12785 Maple Road. Thank you all for everything that you do. I have a question. If we could go back to the picture of the comprehensive plan?
Of the overlay district?
Of the overlay district.
You'll bring that back up on the screen for me, please?
Okay.
There we go.
I'm assuming that all of the little yellow dots over there, that's Keystone Point, which would make the street next to it 123rd Street? Is 123rd Street still going to be a through street to 125th? That's not changed at all? That changes.
No, ma'am. It doesn't change.
It doesn't change. Okay. And everything within that red district can go up to 200 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
For mixed use? Okay. So it'll be on both sides of 123rd, all the way up. Okay, thank you.
If the applicant chooses to do so.
Yeah, all building plans are relative to market issues. We have a second speaker.
Why not up here?
Karen DeLeo, 1935 South Hibiscus Drive. Nice to see you all. And I'm not knowledgeable enough to give an opinion, but I have a question that would probably be easier if I hear you guys talk first. I apologize if you're gonna discuss it. So what I wonder when I look at this and I see what I'm presuming, single-family, a little bit out, and then I'm gonna presume there's something that's 30 feet, 40 feet. Are there plans that you say, "Well, there's 200 feet here, but we build up to that?" So we don't...
This is not any type of site plan. This is a broad concept of what would be permissible. What a developer actually chooses to build five years, 10 years, God only knows. That'll, that's way, way, way down the road. This is simply provides the outline.
But does that mean that you could be driving down the street, and we're gonna be at 20 feet, and then we're gonna be at 200 feet?
Well...
Again, it is how, whatever a developer wishes, their maximum height, they're not required to go to 200. Their maximum height is either one story or 200 stories.
Isn't there somewhere in the comp plan where we're supposed to, like, build our height up so we don't just go low and then high, and then, that's not something? Okay. So it's my misunderstanding then. Okay.
It's all right. It's all right.
Buffer zones? I mean, there's a...
Well, the buffer is a between, for example, the transitioning standards that's currently proposed. And we'll get to those in the LDR conversation.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
There's some transitional standards that this plan recommended that is elsewhere in the code, and they wanted it replicated here. So that if you're adjacent to existing single-family residents, you have to be set back further. So I'll point that out at the LDR.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a third speaker? Last call for, we have, there is no third. All right. Then the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, it is time for commission discussion. Do we want to read this email at this point, Mr. Held? We do? All right.
That should be part of the public comment.
All right. So let's get this in. Okay. We'll pick it up with...
Then, would we, I'm sorry. Proceedually, do we have to still have the public hearing open to read this memo in? Or can we proceed after we close the public hearing, since this love is disintegrated?
It's part of public comment, so, and you don't, I mean, I don't know what the protocol here is in the city. You don't necessarily have to read it into the record as long as you've all read it.
Well, I have not seen it, so in my mind, you should read it into the record. After all, this is a televised hearing. You want to have it out there for the benefit of everybody who didn't happen to come down tonight. All right. This is, "Dear Ms. Love, I have been loosely following the transportation hub recommended by the Planning Commission. It's very exciting. I just saw the map. A train and transportation hub in North Miami could be great. I'm confused about the location. The area of 125th Street is so crowded with very little room for expansion and development without knocking other buildings down, it could create a traffic nightmare. Is it possible to put a development like that at 151st Street near Biscayne Boulevard, the train tracks in West Dixie Highway? There are rumors swirling that FDOT is trying to make Dixie Highway a more traveled street northward to Broward County and north-south artery road like US 1. That 151st Street area would be a great hub. The other consideration for that area are the bordering neighbors. City of North Miami Beach and the state of Florida might kick in some funding for any project around that area. Also, I understand that the Sola Mia development could be a draw for residents and commercial interests alike. Truth be told, that's pretty much a dead zone west of the tracks anyway, with lots of vacant land. There are endless development possibilities, and the roadways are wide and could handle more traffic. Let's face it, North Miami downtown doesn't have the infrastructure to handle more traffic. Let's leave it the quaint, charming downtown it is now. I am unable to attend the Planning Commission on Tuesday night. How do I contact commission members to voice my opinion? I noticed there are no emails of them available online. Can you forward this email to the commission members? Or can you read this letter into the record? Thanks for your assistance. I live in Broward County and have a business in North Miami. I would love to take public transportation to work sincerely, Trish Hamilton, Keystone Point Marina, 1950 Northeast 135th Street, North Miami, Florida, 33181." Okay. Well, for the benefit of all you out here, there is a proposal to locate a train station at 151st, in addition to the one further south into North Miami. Right now, neither one is funded. But at some point in our lives, there will be two train stations for the benefit of Tri-Rail. And we don't have any idea when. The last I heard, Tri-Rail has said, "Well, once we get it open, we're just gonna take some trains off the other Tri-Rail to just make this serviceable. And in the future, when money becomes available, then we'll put enough trains in to make it, you know, practical." So we're all waiting. We have no idea. Our job up here is to create the outlines for development possibilities. What will go where and when is all in the hands of private developers. So, yep, there'll be a train station at the 151st Street area. There will be one in North Miami. The advantage of the North Miami station is obviously based on population. We have far more people living near, within that quarter-mile radius for a downtown North Miami train station than they have within the quarter-mile radius at 151st. And a station at 151st would have to have a pedestrian overpass going over Biscayne Boulevard, and that is going to cost FDOT a huge amount of money. So that's out there. So Trish, yes, we see those things happening, but whether it'll happen in my lifetime or yours, I honestly don't know. So, you may.
I have a comment on that email. I noticed that the resident, or the business owner mentioned something about FDOT and rumors. And, you know, as part of the Downtown Action Planning Advisory Committee, we actually received a letter from FDOT, and they performed their own separate, independent project development study, and they studied the whole corridor. And they also identified 125th Street location to be the most viable location in that corridor for a train station. So I think it's pretty promising that, you know, us as a city, we have a TOD study that kind of matches up exactly with another government entity, and another, you know, private firm went and studied and got the same results. So to me, it's pretty cut and dry. I like studies and data. And so that's, you know, I think it's pretty promising that our TOD study also showed the same exact results, so. That's all I want to comment.
All right. Thank you. It is time for commission discussion. So, Mr. James, you've had yours. Charlie, you want to have something to say?
Yeah, my only observation of this is remembering the fact that this is Virgin USA's train track. It used to be called Bright Line. Now I believe it's called Virgin USA Trains. And I just hope that somewhere along the line, they get together with Tri-Rail and work out a deal. But as you mentioned, Kevin, we may be long gone by then. I think it'll be years before it happens, but as Ms. Love had pointed me out in our discussions, at least if you have a plan in place, you get their attention. It's sort of the concept of, if you build it, they may come. So, I mean, I have no problem with that, and just hope for the best, really. But, you know, realistically, it's going to be up to how the deal works out with Virgin and how it works out with Tri-Rail, as whether or not they can come to an agreement and use of that track. So let's just hope it works out for the best for us.
All right. Do we have any other comments from commissioners?
Yes, I have one.
All right. Mike?
Being that we're trying to plan this for the future, whenever that happens, and being that there's a lot of talk about new city halls, parking lot right across the street, rather than the boundary ending two blocks away on 10th, can we just move the boundary two blocks to 8th?
Sure.
Okay? And if we move it two blocks to 8th, that'll put us directly in connection with the redevelopment of our city hall, new parking garage, which would tie in perfectly to a train stop. If we had a parking garage right over here, people could just park their cars and get on a shuttle and just go right to the train, and vice versa. So again, I think just moving the boundary from 10th to 8th, as I said, we don't know when it'll ever happen, but at least planning for the future, I think that that'll make it more synchronistic with what supposedly is gonna be happening right here.
That can be adopted as a recommendation. Okay? Do we have?
Well, I have a couple of things, but go ahead.
All right. Well, go ahead, Kenny.
Mr. Chair. On Mr. McDermott's point, I think it'd be appropriate to have a staff comment to provide some competent substantial evidence to support or not that recommendation.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Held. Again, Debbie Love, for the record, Debbie Love, city planner. The interesting piece with this plan, and the boundary, and the reason it didn't pick up City Hall...
is that it was already covered under something else. So, what we, this plan, and let me back up one step. This plan isn't about a train station.
Oh, we understand that.
Thank you for that, and I just want to make it clear for the public. This isn't about a train station. This train station is a centerpiece of this, but there's a mobility hub. And so, as, as Mike mentioned, the plan for that area, at City Hall, is more of a mobility hub. There are some preliminary conversations going on as to what would be there and how MOKA and the City Hall and all of that works together. I'm not sure that at this time extending it over is, is recommended, because we looked at that when we were, we were considering the boundary and rejected it for other reasons. So, I'd be more than happy to go back and talk with our team about that recommendation, but at this time, there was a, that idea was already rejected.
Yeah, could you go back?
I, I think we should go back.
I would certainly do that.
That is something that could be done next year or thereafter.
I don't, Kevin, I don't think we should wait till next year on that. I think we should vote on that tonight and have a...
Well, we can certainly adopt it as a recommendation.
Certainly.
You see that, that those things can be done.
What, what's confusing, though, isn't it already part of a transportation plan within that 125th Street corridor, though? So, is one conflicting with the other? Or if, if, let's say, Mr. McDermott's recommendation would override what's already planned for that part of the transportation concept within that, that overlay district? Because that overlay district already has transportation criteria, correct?
Well, it currently is in the, yes and no. Yes to the question that, is it part of something else, another plan, yes. Is it, you know, outside of the realm of recommending that maybe it would be in conflict? Not necessarily. Because again, this is, a lot of this is conceptual, because you're trying to put the framework in place for developers, private developers, private property owners to redevelop their, their properties. So, you want to have that mobility hub. So, I don't see that it necessarily would be in conflict. But again, I'll take that back and talk closer to staff, a little bit more with staff, because that's in the plan as this boundary currently, that has already been adopted by the CRA. So, it would require us to do something that's outside of the proposed plan, as far as changing boundaries. So, we'll definitely go back and talk to staff about it.
So, Mr. McDermott can go ahead and make a, a recommendation, so when we...
He can make a recommendation.
And we can make it a part of our, our proposal, acceptance of a proposal.
We could phrase it as an item for consideration.
That might be a better choice of phrasing, only until I go back and talk to the consultants a little bit more about your proposal, because there was a specific reason that that stopped there.
I did notice that, that those, some of those areas are R2 districts, which usually are less...
Don't want them in there.
Exactly, so that would, you would have to, I think it'd be in conflict with that, once you move that boundary.
It would be jiggy-jagging around more, and so, we just wanted to make sure there were no residential, you know, R2 included in here at all.
But they're adjacent or abutting.
If they are adjacent, yeah, and that's why there's very little, there's very little. And so, we wanted to make sure it had heavy transitional standards for those areas that are... So, I just, we just don't want to include any more.
So, the NRO was conceptual, and that's been a fine kettle of fish for us. My opinion of this, because I live east of the railroad tracks, I think it's too large a footprint, I think 200 feet is too tall. We've got a plan, we've got a planned development for our city, for all of our major corridors, and that's about 110 feet. So, I'm not sure why this needs to be 200-foot canyons on one of the only two east-west roads through the city. If I, if I, if I go anyplace, I've got to drive across railroad tracks. And not tonight, fortunately, but it normally takes me about 30 minutes to go a mile and a half to get to City Hall. And there's no mitig, there's no congestion mitigation element to all of this, other than get out of your car and walk or ride a bike. One of my neighbors just got hit riding his bike down the street the other day, and as you said, riding a bike on 125th Street is almost Russian roulette. So, I just think we've got an, we have overlay, I think we have overlapping overlays here, don't we?
Yeah, and some of that, and you...
We just put a boundary around the whole city and call it an overlay district.
One of the recommendations in here is actually to shrink the NRO boundary so that, and move it over. And that's a conversation we're going to have eventually, is how to deal with the NRO. So, there's a small portion of the district that is currently also in the NRO, with the idea that part of the implementation strategy is that you remove that NRO boundary.
But isn't it interesting, we're so overlay happy that we're just overlapping overlays?
I think it becomes confusing, nobody knows which overlay to look at.
Well, you all, we need to look at the...
So, you can build anything.
The primary would always be...
Anything except a drugstore.
Like, like the zoning, and then you have the NRO, and then you have PCD. When there's a conflict between the PCD and the NRO, the PCD comes out ahead. Same thing, it would be here. It would be, you've got the NRO, but the NRO allows you to do a lot of those other things that you couldn't elsewhere. So, the idea that, as you and I discussed, Ms. Pashon, is that part of the implementation would be to look at that NRO boundary as well, as a recommendation from the plan. And as we talked earlier, the 200 feet is not going to be every, every property, the 200...
It's available in every property.
It is available, and it is as the market will take it. Some will not be that high. And so, while it is available, people will take advantage of it however they wish to.
So, again, as I told you the other day, I think it's too high, it's too tall, and possibly, why is it district-wide? Why do, why does it have to be completely indiscriminate, where portions of it could be 110 feet, and portions of it don't necessarily have to be? I mean, it's kind of easy to make it 200 every place and just call it a day. I mean, it's intellectually lazy, but I think it's easy. So, that's my opinion.
Indicative of what a developer's going to want to build.
Sir, you need to use microphone.
He's sharing a microphone, oh my goodness.
It's all indicative of what a developer's going to want to put. So, if we limit, were to have limited less than 200, then you have less potential developers looking at the properties. So, leave it at the 200, it's open, if a developer wants it, it's a possibility. It's not, as Debbie's saying, it's not that everything is going to be 200 feet.
And in this, we, we have an implementation framework. And as we talked, is that they've got other items in here. It's not just the station, it's the infrastructure, it's the improving bike ped connectivity. It's looking at, the mobility hub would be for the buses that we have, you know, to be a nice mobility hub here. So, I appreciate what you're saying, and it's certainly a decision that you all could recommend and vote on. This was adopted by the CRA board after public workshops at this height and at the recommendate, recommend, recommended density as well, so...
And that's where we are.
I have to defer to you all what you decide to put into your recommendations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Eich.
You know, we had talked often enough about creating a compact urban center. And it suggested from 123rd Street, parallel with the tracks to 135th Street, 16th Avenue over, including Emerald, Venice Lane, Venice Park Drive. And I don't know how many times we said this, but the Urban Land Institute, if we get that station over there, they should work, play, and live in the same neighborhood. You want to travel downtown, you get on this train, you go downtown. If you want to go to Palm Beach or to Broward, Fort Lauderdale, you get on that train, you don't have to drive. That's what's happening throughout the world.
Right.
And for some reason, in North Miami, let's say since the early 80s, we don't want anything higher than four stories. And when we look around, I look at these buildings back there, I live in that area, I look at those buildings that are parallel with the tracks, they're two-story, three-story, four-story buildings that should be knocked down. Take a run down 125th Terrace, it's disgraceful. I would love to see a beautiful, new, upscale apartment over there, giving us a good tax base, okay? That would lower our millage rate, that would enhance the property east of the Boulevard. You know, what we're afraid of, I look at 135th Street and Biscayne Boulevard with that shopping center over there. And, and I don't understand why, on that corner, across the street, on, on the, the west side of 135th Street, we don't have a high-rise there, we can't do that because we're restricted. Well, it doesn't make any sense. There's certain areas of the city, and we, we do these overlays. I'd rather just come out and say, "Okay, this area is going to be zoned for this, this area is going to be zoned for that, this area is going to be zoned for that." And that way, we don't have to throw a net up in the air and hope that I, I'm not going to have a tall building beside me, or if I'm going to buy in there, I know that I'm going to get a tall building eventually. It, it doesn't make any sense. And while we're on this, I spoke to you earlier today, Deb, and I'm looking at this transportation overlay, and I see that there are two blocks that are public use. If you look to the south of it, just north of 123rd Street, you'll see, you see the two green pieces down there that are PU? And you said that in the PU district, it has to be public use, you can't develop, okay? But now, that's going to be in the transportation overlay, so you can develop it, right? Well, I'm going to make the suggestion at this time, because Emerald, as I've mentioned before, we got somehow suckered into the public use. That should all be part of the transportation overlay, along with Arch Creek Road, Venice Park Drive, and Venice Lane. I mean, right there is waterfront property. Venice Lane, Venice Park Drive with ocean access. And the buildings that are there right now are decrepit, it, it is trash out there all the time, so forth and so on. That's prime for development. And, and I don't know why, you know, I, I walk the city in the morning, I, I see it, it's there. And, and we're just like stuck in the grass. So, I'm, I want to make a suggestion or a proposal that Emerald, Venice Lane, Venice Park Drive, and Arch Creek, right up to 135th Street, become part of the transportation overlay. And that way, you, 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 when you want to the, if you go to the west, you also notice that you have PU also where the school is, right? Well, William Jennings Bryan, that's public use. You see the green, it says PU there? Okay, that's in the transportation overlay. So, if you have that in the transportation overlay, and you have those two properties that belong to Johnson and Wales are public use that are in the transportation overlay, then make the rest of the neighborhood in the transportation overlay. You know, revitalize that area. That, that's the whole thing, that's the whole, I, I, idea behind this whole hub. You know, and then the other thing, we, we talked about 151st Street. Let, let's say this comes to fruition and you do develop a, a station there. You don't want it on 151st Street, because now you're going to have all the people coming over from the beach, from Surfside, from Aventura, what have you, and then they're going to travel north on Biscayne Boulevard, and you're going to have massive gridlock. You want to get those cars off, off of the roadway as soon as possible. It, it makes no sense to have a, a, our station up there. And, you know, folks, you heard it, I heard it, Sally Hammond was pushing for it on 151st Street. I say no, I want to see the downtown core redeveloped. I'm tired of looking at all the dumpy buildings over there, or you, you look at that old Texaco station on 14th Avenue and 123rd Street, you see the old Exxon station on the other side with the tire place. You drive down 123rd Street, it's embarrassing, it is totally, totally embarrassing. You see the old golf station in front of the, the storage building over there on the south side of 14th Avenue? We have to have a vision, and we don't have to be afraid of the future, and density is not bad. The Urban Land Institute said density is a good thing. It's, it's, you have synergy, you, you have people with disposable income. And, and when you develop your city, you develop your tax base. I'd ra, and I said this often enough, I'd rather have a wealthy city helping poor people than a poor city helping nobody. And that's what's going to happen if we keep burying our heads in the sand. We, we can be like the Council of Trent and say, "No, the world does not rotate on this axis." You know, I mean, where are we at? And, and for the, I've been here since 1970, 27 years in the police department, and, and I just, I want to scream when I, when I, when I see it. We have a chance now to do something, and I hope we do it positively, and I, you know, I, I'm in for, I'm, I'm in favor of this. And I'd like to extend that.
All right, well Kenny, I think when we, when we've heard from the other commissioners, we'll, we can then go ahead and address that as another recommendation for staff to look at and, and to consider, because we know that these, these overlay districts are never cut in stone, and as studies develop, boundaries change. And you make good points on, on, on where you're coming from. They're hemmed in because of their theoretical one-quarter-mile radius. But, that's, that's negotiable, too.
You know, when we talked about PU, what you actually have done is you stymied a great deal of property owners that can't even put an addition on a house, unless we change it. So, this is one method of changing that.
True.
You know? It's just a method of changing that, where they have the opportunity to develop their properties also.
All right, so you've got some recommendations. Gentlemen, do we have others that wish to speak to this? All right, so, all right, well then, in order to do this, Mr. Held, we've got the core resolution that need, that would need to be adopted and go forward, and then we have recommendations that would affect this. Now, do we take the recommendations first and basically adopt those and then adopt the resolution? Or do we adopt the resolution and then go back and adopt recommendations to the resolution?
So, this is an ordinance, not a resolution?
Oh, ordinance.
And so, and it's going to be your recommendation on the ordinance?
Right.
So, it seems to me you should address each of the recommendations first, vote on them, and then the ordinance as a package with the recommendations that survive.
Okay, all right. Well, with that in mind, then, the first recommendation that was made, I think, was, was Bob Pashon's to lower the height.
That was, right, lower the height.
That was his recommendation and his request. Is there anyone supporting that? That's, it would need a second at least to get to that point. I, I don't hear a second, so, Bob, I, I think you, you, you find yourself without allies on that point at the moment. But, the chair reserves the right to let you bring that up again when this comes back to us, as it will. All right, then our second recommendation is Mike's recommendation to consider moving the boundary further west to northeast 8th Avenue. Now, Ms. Love pointed out that with some reason they didn't but couldn't recall the rationale, so this is just a recommendation to go back to staff and have them look at that and reconsider whether or not that would be a wise course of action. Do we have a second to Mike's recommendation?
Second.
Second by Mr. Eich, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, that. And one appo, we have, all right, so Charlie's opposed?
No.
And Bob was opposed, and we have one, two, three, four in favor. So, and I'll support the majority on that, so Mike's recommendation carries with two objections, okay? All right, then we have the recommendation of Mr. Eich to extend the boundary north to 135th to include, let me see if I get this right, Venice Park Drive, and what were the other boundaries?
Emerald, Venice Park Drive, Venice Lane, and Arch Creek Road.
Okay, Arch Creek Road, Venice Lane, Emerald Park Drive, and Venice Park Drive. All right, do we have a second on those recommendations?
I'll, I'll...
All right, we have a second from...
Goodwin, Melton.
Melton Goodwin, thank you. Okay. All right, and Charlie? You... You're, you're supporting that? Okay, all right, so that's. All right, do we have, let's take a vote on that recommendation. So, Kenny, and seconded by Mr. Goodwin, and all in favor of that?
Aye.
And Bob was opposed?
Correct.
Bob was opposed, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, okay, so that. Now, we get to the core ordinance, right? Okay, now, the chair will call for a motion on the ordinance.
Are we doing it with, as recommended?
Yes, as, as the two recommendations were passed, two out of the three. All right, so, move by Mr. McDermott. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Good, Goodwin. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nope.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, six to one on that, so that passes, all right? All right, so we're past that part of it. Now, we get to go to PC seven dash nineteen. This is an, an ordinance of the.
Implementing what you just.
Yeah, PC seven nineteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Four, zoning districts, and the official zoning map to establish the North Miami Transit Station Overlay District, providing for repeal, conflict severability, correction of scribbler's error, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Again, for the record, Debbie Love, city planner. This is the companion item to go along with the comprehensive plan amendment. Let me move along in the presentation. All right. So now, this is your implementing regulations. This is where we take the outline, the framework of the hundred and twenty-five dwelling units and the height and the location, and start flushing out how we're going to implement and regulate this district. It starts with, again, it allows a multiplicity of uses as outlined in the comprehensive plan, and the ordinance lists them out. Maximum one hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre. The, a minimum lot size, this is, this is where it's different than the comp plan. Comp plan doesn't deal with lot sizes and dwelling unit sizes and lot coverage. So, here we're looking at a ten thousand square foot minimum lot size for redevelopment in the district. So, the idea here is to encourage assemblage of parcels, so you don't have, you're not trying to put a little two-hundred-foot building on a little lot, right? So, that's critical. That's very important.
You know, City of Miami does that quite often now, you know?
Yes, sir, I know that.
Yes.
But that's not what we want here. Based upon all the public workshops, that's not what came out of it. It was, we really like to see a larger development come out of this. So, ten thousand square foot is your minimum lot size. Dwelling units is a little different in this district. It is, you're only going to have multifamily development in this district because none of the underlying zoning will allow single-family, and we don't want single-family here. So, on the multifamily dwelling unit size, it's five hundred square feet as recommended in the plan. The lot coverage, currently, some of these districts have everything from seventy-five percent to eighty percent lot coverage. This is increasing that to ninety percent lot coverage so that they can get the better bang for the buck. And then, we would get out of them through the resiliency process is higher standards for stormwater and drainage. And the setbacks are reduced. Zero, either zero to ten on the front, zero on the side, and zero in the rear. So, the idea is that you have that compact development that is all abutting one another. They have landscape standards, so they'll have, still have to do their landscaping, they still have to do all of that. But as far as buildings and, and they have a lot more flexibility in the development of the site.
Gosh, you know, I, I always want a room with a view of somebody else's bathroom.
And that's why I said, that's the, that's the, that's the beauty of the market.
Yes.
That's the beauty of the market, is, is they're only going to build what they can sell. They don't want something that is not going to sell. The transi, and this goes to the transitional standards I mentioned after the speaker on the first item. This is critical because you do have up next to the M-one, the large M-one section up there on the north west of the FEC line, you do have a single-family there. So, these transitional standards, as it says in the, the actual regulation, and if I, if you bear with me just a moment, I'd like to point those out to you. Structures with a height of greater than thirty-five feet proposed to be developed on parcels of land which are adjacent to existing single-family dwellings shall be set back twenty-five feet from the property line adjacent to the existing single-family dwellings. And then, so that zero is inapplicable there. And then, no surface parking lot shall be located within seven and a half feet of any property line. So, anybody who is doing a surface lot in that district adjacent to the single-family, they would have to stay away from the property line. So, there are some transitional protections that this plan recommended, and this is actually somewhere else, elsewhere in our code, and they acknowledged that, said, let's bring that over into here. Because they were very careful in carving it out to make sure no single families were included.
Debbie, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Was that always M-one, or at one time was that, because of residential homes being along there, I, I think you're referring to the ones that are on one hundred and thirty-fifth street, facing one hundred and thirty-fifth street, correct?
I think it's one hundred and thirty, the industrially is one hundred and thirty-first to.
To one hundred and thirty.
Yeah, to about one hundred and twenty-seven.
I'm looking at the.
Yeah, a little bit.
It's one hundred and thirty-first street.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on. I thought it was one hundred and thirty-fifth. Never mind.
Clearly, for as long as I've been on this commission, it's, it's only been M-one.
It's, it's. Fourteenth Avenue to the railroad tracks, one hundred and thirty-first to about one hundred and twenty-third.
Even though there's residential in there, I can see it, correct?
No, but there's no residential in there. It's all, it's all.
No industrial.
It's, yeah, yeah. You've got residential across the street. But nothing there, not in that area. Now, what you do have on, on one hundred and thirty-first street is you have residential on the north side of the street.
Right. Okay, I see it now.
And that's, that's.
I missed reading it. My apologies. I thought it was.
No, no.
That's not single-family on that side.
Next time I'll bring my glasses.
The single-family is actually on the west side of.
Fourteenth Avenue.
Fourteenth Avenue.
Right.
All right, so.
Mr. Held has a.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to get clarification on the transitional standards. Go into it for a little more detail.
Since the question was raised earlier, certainly.
And I have a question on it as well.
All right.
So, if, if you go back to the comprehensive plan, it's part of what you just recommended. On the fifth page, it's policy one point sixteen point one. It defines what the transitional standard from a policy point of view would be. So, if, if I can just read that for a second. Acceptable transitions adjacent, and adjacent means in our code, across the street.
Yeah.
Acceptable transitions adjacent to single-family neighborhoods outlining the NRO, NMT, SOD, which is these transit districts, and PCD should be single-family detached and detached dwellings. Two-family dwellings made to appear as single-family detached dwellings and multiple-family dwellings that appear as single-family attached dwellings. Buildings adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods outlining the M, NRO, NMT, SOD, and PCD should be no higher than three floors. Should, when abutting a single-family residential lot outlining the NRO, NMT, SOD, and, and/or PCD yards and setbacks among the common lot lines should be equal to or greater than that of a single-family lot. Sixteen, one point sixteen point one. It's the fifth page of the prior package. Guiding principles. So, the implementing sentences that are part of the LDR amendment that you're now considering says, structures with a height of greater than thirty-five feet, at least it starts like that, proposed to be developed in parcels which are adjacent to existing single-family dwellings. So, that seems to be beyond the should be no greater than thirty-five, should be no higher than three floors. It, it assumes that there are buildings that are gonna be higher than three floors. It doesn't create a default that needs to be proven or an, an exception to default why you should go higher than three floors when you're adjacent to a single-family district. It, if I was writing that, I would say, structures proposed to be developed in parcels of land which are adjacent to existing single-family dwellings shall have a height no greater than thirty-five feet. That's the three-floor height limit that seems to be suggested by the policy.
Well, we, hmm, that's interesting, that's a, that's a, that's a interesting point that you just raised, Mr. Held.
And then, the single fam, the setback of twenty-five feet, if you are going higher than thirty-five feet, it should be some sort of a sliding scale. I mean, thirty-five feet for three floors, but if you're going fifty feet, a hundred feet, or two-hundred feet high, you have an increasing setback to protect those single-family structures across the street from some large building permitted in this district. Just something to think about. I, I read it differently than maybe staff has been interpreting it. It just seems to be, and I'm, as a habit, more protective of single-family neighborhoods.
It just sounds like language is bad, right?
In the Biscayne Park Transitional Zone, that gives an extra foot for every, whatever it is, so the further you move back from the boundary, or the taller you are, the further you must move back from the boundary.
Right.
Right. But I think it's a problem with, what he's bringing up is the way that it was written. It's not written to precise enough to, to, to describe the grad, the graduated height limits that we wanna come up with. We, we did not.
One is the height, and the other is the setback. Two issues.
Right, and it says that it should be equal to or greater than the single-family lot, which is where you get the twenty-five feet. Which is why we have, in our transition, it's twenty-five feet. So, it talks about it has to be the same setback as a single-family home. So, that's why you get that, when you put that twenty-five feet in there.
Well, what I'm getting at, what I'm getting from this, then, is that there needs to be a language modification. Is that correct, counselor?
That would be my opinion. There's many opinions in the room.
Right, no, I, I mean, I, I, I appreciate the direction you're trying to, to give us.
You're throwing fifty million dollars into the project to actually build anything, but it would be nice if we could work that out tonight as a recommendation on language just so we, we understand the importance of the transitional area. Do you have a language suggestion, having now opened that door, sir?
I think it depends on the policy that staff and the commission want to implement. What is it that you want across the street from a single-family home? It seems like the policy that's in the comprehensive plan says it should not be higher than three floors. Should is not mandatory. Should is encouraging.
Yeah.
So, that to me says there would be a mechanism to go beyond the three floors, but it wouldn't be as a matter of right, which is the way this is written.
Would you?
Shall not, then, would be the term to use, correct? If, if we just change the language, it would be to.
Should language?
Well, we have two ways to go with this. Yes, we could recommend a specific language, or we could recommend that the council and staff resolve the conflict. Before final reading. Because you're right, you've got policy that was written, you know, several years ago, and now you have this new proposal coming, and then the, and the difference is not so great. It's subtle, but it's, it's significant, but it is a matter of policy, and that falls into the political realm.
All of this is a matter of policy that, that Held is, is raising.
And so, I, I would come down in favor of recommending that the council resolve the, this potential conflict between policy and LDR before this goes into the second reading.
Right, also, staff can take a look at the issue and possibly make a recommendation before it goes to the commission.
Okay.
Right, and then that would be the, because for us to split hairs on, on words here or there, it would fall on deaf ears rather than obliging the council to make a decision. They, they can, they, they don't have time to read this. They'll gloss right over this. But if we put it to them as, you've gotta make a decision on this, guys, I, I think that would be more of an attention grabber, and that would give staff the introduction to sit down with the city manager and the, the council members and say, okay, you know, we have this conflict, we need to bridge this before it gets to second reading.
And it's an excellent point, and just for the matter of record, you're talking about six parcels that would be affected. So, we would want to make sure that whatever protections we can, you know, make sure that's there. That's the whole point of this, is to make sure that our R-twos are protected. So, we've got six parcels of land that could potentially be impacted, and so we wanna make sure that we get that clarity. Oh, sorry.
All right, so then, the, the way I see this is, Chair, I think the recommendation should be that this discrepancy be brought to the attention of council and staff, and they resolve it before this gets to second reading.
So moved.
All right, so that's my recommendation. Do we want to adopt that recommendation?